Yeah, I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, responses I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Betcher, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Well, I appreciate the time this evening before the board. A little bit of background on who's gathered with me this evening. My name is William Betcher, this is my wife Caroline Betcher. We're joined by my father-in-law Stephen Foot, who is also the architect of the design that we've submitted today. My wife and I arrived in Reading a little over a year ago. It was quite an anxious time trying to find a house in Reading. And we were lucky enough to land at 15 Oak Street, which is a place that we hope to stay for 30 or 40 years as our kids go through the school system, et cetera. We're coming before you tonight to request a special permit. The house that we live in is on a non-conforming lot, and it's a non-conforming house already. And we're asking for this special permit so that we can make an addition onto the rear of the house that will extend our kitchen, will provide us a mudroom, a place to store some of our kids' toys and coats and skis and bikes, et cetera, as well as to behind that add a three-season porch. The reason the special permit is required is that a small section, approximately 80 square feet, it would be non-conforming to the 15-foot setback that is currently required. We've been working pretty closely with our contractor, Mark Hall, throughout this design process, and are quite excited with the opportunity to be able to move forward pending the approval of this group. I do have one letter I'd like to submit at this time, appropriate from an abutter.
Okay.
Coincidentally, this abutter came before this seeing group in 2005 requesting the same identical permission, so.
Okay, thank you. I will read this when we open up for public hearing. I will read this into the minutes at that time.
Okay, that's good.
And that's pretty much.
I think that's it. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sure. Okay. We do not have the building inspector, code enforcement officer with us tonight, but he did leave a memo. I will go ahead and read into the memo, or into the minutes, his comments on this particular case. This is from Glenn Redmond, dated Thursday, September 4th, 2014. Case number 1417, 15 Oak Street. This is a building permit application to construct an addition of 16 by 21, 16 feet by 21 feet with a side yard setback of 10.3 feet. The required yard setback in the S-15 district is 15.0 feet. The non-conforming dwelling located on a non-conforming lot may apply to the ZBA for a special permit under Section 6.3.6. I do not have any concerns with this proposal and would support the granting of a special permit, as from the building inspector. David, any comments on this particular case?
I don't have any at this time. I may ask them after the board gets through.
Kathleen?
No, I really don't have any questions.
John?
I have a couple of observations and I have a couple of questions. I looked at the request that you had made. I looked at the plans, the architectural drawings, it was kind of difficult to read because they were so small. And I'm not an architect, so I may have made some errors in looking at them, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. The plans, to me first, the observation, the plans appear to be indicative of a one-story addition with a finished basement.
Yeah, there is no finished basement plan, but it is a one-story addition. There's a full basement that will be added, but not finished.
Oh, on the architectural plans that I saw down in the basement, a study which sits directly below the sitting room, which is budding the opened-up kitchen.
I think that's intended to be the future space. There is.
Oh, it doesn't tell me on the architectural plans, so I'm just reading from what I saw.
There's no plans at this time to finish the basement space. It does have a egress point that will be added, but that's purely just for safety.
Okay. Then the next observation I made, it appears that we have a four-season porch that is not without, is, that is without foundation, that is attached to the addition that you're coming before the board for.
Yeah, I would characterize it as a three-season porch. It's uninsulated, it is on currently piers, and pending approval of the building permit, if it's requested, we could put it on a foundation.
Okay.
But actually, our contractor and I have sort of been debating that back and forth.
So that's not part of the application tonight, the three-season porch?
No, it's conforming in every regard, so I think it would be part of the building permit that we would request.
I'm coming to the, part of my observation.
Is it, is it part, so it is part of what, as I say, I'm looking at this.
Correct, yep.
Is that?
If you prefer the three-season. The site plan, the non-conforming element is an 80-square foot porch.
Oh, I see, I see.
Just in this area.
Where it says proposed porch is what you're talking, is your three-season porch.
Correct, yeah.
I see, I see.
Okay, I didn't know what the flooring was, I didn't know about the insulation, that's not included, so again.
Yeah, there's no insulation, we're currently planning to do essentially a Trex decking in that area, that will be, have open gapping, sort of the 16-penny gap, it's traditional to what you'd see on an open, exposed deck.
But you're still putting a fireplace in there.
Correct.
So the fireplace in the colder weather would be contrary to the open decking that you have uncovered.
It's an ambiance.
It's not a heating element.
You have planned a laundry area, which is on a common wall between the addition and the porch?
Correct.
And you also have three additional means of egress from the addition porch area. I was wondering why you were utilizing three additional means of egress.
So I'm only aware of two means. There's an entryway from the proposed addition into the proposed porch, and then there's an exit way from the proposed porch to the backyard. And there is a small, traditional porch that's covered, it's about a five-foot porch that has a roof over it, but no other walls. One thing that may be confusing is the actual, the sidewalls of the three-season porch are actually made up of essentially screen doors that have the ability to have a 12-light insert placed in them. So it may look like there's this whole series of doors, although none of them are, except for the ones that we propose to exit through, operational.
Well, I, according to the architectural plans, I see one, which appears to be a main entrance off of the driveway side.
Yeah.
And then on the opposite side, where the, where Judd's in, there is also, to me, it certainly looks like a, an additional means of egress, a small doorway, doesn't look like a major doorway. And then the third means of egress is out of the back of the porch area, onto the deck.
Correct. Yeah, so that's the exit way from the basement. Because of the grading of the lot, that doorway opposite the driveway that you indicate is actually in, I think, a four-step well that would just go into the basement, it wouldn't be connected to the other living areas.
So from those observations, I've developed three questions.
Yep.
Question number one. I had difficulty separating the porch area from the actual area of the addition, which is what you're coming in before board four.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll tell you the reason for that, because it involves the next two questions that I have to ask you. Question B was, or the second question was, do you intend in adding any additional plumbing to the common wall between the porch area and the addition?
No, the only plumbing would be for hot and cold water lines and essentially a waste line for the washer and dryer.
So you do not plan a sink or anything like that?
No.
And the other question was, the sum of the two is what I'm trying to get to in my question, and this is the big question. You would have in SS, in SS, about 1,000 square feet of additional living space between the porch and the addition that you're proposing to add. Is there any intent in the future to use that as a second means or a second living quarters, such as an accessory apartment?
There are no plans at all to use it as an accessory apartment. If you were able to take the tour inside of our house, we would never be willing to give up that space unless it was to our children as they return from college, but not in any means of accessory apartment.
And the reason I ask that is because this is, as I said, this is, if you look at the architect, to me, if I look at the architectural plans, I see a second living unit, and that to me, three additional means of egress means there's something else going in there. And I know I'm being, as someone says, sometimes I see things as a glass that's half-full, but I think that I try to see things as the glass is, I'm sorry, see things as half-empty, and most of the time, I try to see things as the glass being half-full. So that's where my big questions come from, because this could so easily, by putting up the wall back on the kitchen area, and by putting in a sink area in the cut-through, and as you said, maybe the contractor and maybe the building inspector will say, put a foundation under that porch, since it's all enclosed and there's substantial load there, and you may need a foundation to support what you have, especially in the winter months in New England, that may have an impact down the road, then you have a four-season porch. But besides that, those are my basic questions, you've answered them?
Well, let me make one additional clarifying statement. We do not have any intent at this time to make this into an accessory apartment, and if it was helpful to the board, perhaps could be included as part of the approval or potential approval of the special permit, make it a condition that it couldn't be made into that in the future.
Okay. May I just offer one remark?
Certainly.
The confusion that you see about the number of doors is wholly my fault, because in the process of this design, we began, and it was just a screen porch, and hence the gap in the floorboards and all that, because the rain pours in and so forth. As we began to develop the idea of essentially using a series of door-like panels which could receive glass inserts, meant that, you know, when it came time for October or something, you could add, you could just swap out the screen for the glass insert. Now, all those things are available to you as doors, so you could have more than, you could have more than one open, and I think I drew more than, more door swings there than I should have, to make the thing entirely clear to you. So for that, I apologize.
Well, I wasn't concerned about the one means of egress off of the porch in the back towards on the deck area. I was more concerned about the two means of egress on either side of the entryway to the addition, and what could so easily be an up and down living quarters with what you have there. A simple change in plumbing and putting up that wall that you have now opened up through could easily be made whole again, and then you would have two living quarters, and that's a situation that the board has been involved in before, so.
You know, I understand, like, thinking about the drawing, how you would see that. It never occurred to me, because, to be honest, I mean, this is the home that we're going to raise our family, and there's not going to be another family or anybody else there.
Yeah, and the entryway from the driveway will be our primary means to enter and leave the house. As you may be familiar, we are directly across the street from the Joshua Eaton. It gets quite busy there in the morning, and it's much safer for us to be entering and parking in the rear of the house, and we intend to continue to do that. This potential addition will make coming and going from the house a lot more pleasurable than it currently is today.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Si, any questions?
Well, it's an observation more than a question, I think, that, you know, considering the nature of the lot you live on, which is a very, very small frontage and a very, very extended direction going back, whatever you might want to do with that property has to go backwards. And the thing that only concerns me most is, in so doing, whether or not you are seriously jeopardizing or impacting the side setbacks on the property.
Meaning the rear setback, huh?
No, I'm talking more about the sides. And I don't see that as an issue, so I frankly don't have a real problem with what you really want to do. I mean, I can look at the architectural drawings and so forth, and to me, that's a situation which you deal with Glenn on. I'm more concerned about the impact on the property itself and the setbacks and so forth, and I don't have a problem. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Si. Myself, I looked at things and took a look at the property. Appears to be an existing legal non-conforming lot and structure, dates from about 1901, so predates zoning on that, and that's where we get the legal non-conformity on it. Existing dwelling has a 9.2-foot setback, I believe, yeah, on the easterly side. Proposed additions scheduled to have a 10.3-foot setback, even though it'll be within the 50, it's less than what exists there already, so there's no new non-conformity. The new addition's fully in the existing rear yard of the structure. As Si says, that's where, in this particular case, it would appear the only way you could expand would be going towards the rear. It doesn't appear like it would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure is, since I don't think you'd be able to see it too well from the front of the house, so I don't think you're going to see it. And property in the lot coverage is still going to be less than 25% on that, so I personally would fully support this request for a special permit. While we hear, David?
Can I ask a couple of clarifications?
Sure, absolutely.
Again, I just want to sort of understand the egress and the locations of the egress. I know you're, I know you're going to get yelled at when you get, when you get home about this, but, but, but let, let me, let me just, so if I'm looking at the west elevation drawings that you guys supplied.
Yeah.
The proposed side of the building where the chimney fireplace is going to be, that entrance is, that is in the proposed addition versus the porch?
Yes.
That entrance is a step up into the mudroom?
It's actually probably three steps up into a small entry stoop.
Small entryway?
And then it would go into the mudroom.
Okay, and so, and maybe this is my confusion. Where, where is the proposed entryway that you suggest will go into the basement? Is that on the east side?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I think, let me just, let me just get there. And that proposed entry, if I'm looking at the east elevation drawing, is this, is this not complete, or does this, does this show where?
Please, please, can you show me there where the, where the entry into the basement is going to be on the east elevation? It doesn't show it.
Okay, so that drawing, that drawing is incomplete, so let me get you one that.
No, 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 it's complete, but the entrance is not on the east wall, it's on that little north face where it returns.
Oh, I see, so it's facing into the backyard.
It's facing into the backyard.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I see.
I'm, I'm good now.
So if you take over the north elevation.
Yep, that's what I, I just.
You see that doorway?
Right.
Yeah, into the actual addition.
That's, got it now.
Yeah.
I got it now, okay. Thank you. Nothing further from me.
No further questions?
No.
At this time, I will go ahead and open this up to public comment. Before I ask the public here if there's any comment, let me read in a letter that was submitted tonight from an abutter. This is from Amy in Frank Greco, 19 Oak Street, Reading, Mass. Zoning Board of Appeals, to whom it may concern, I am writing this letter as a director abutter of Caroline and William Betcher. My husband and I have lived on Oak Street for over 20 years, and have had the good fortune to have wonderful neighbors the entire time. We have seen the proposed plans for the addition to 15 Oak Street, and are thrilled to see the improvements that will be made. The design is a seamless transition to the original home, and continues the integrity of the homes, home styles in the neighborhood. We are hopeful that this special permit will be approved as we look forward to seeing these plans come to fruition. Signed, Amy Greco. We'll put that into the file. And now I will ask, is there anybody here from the public tonight who would like to speak on this?
My name is Sean Burke, and I live in.
I have to sway you in for a second.
Sorry.
Yeah, you came in a little late, sorry. I'll sway you in, yeah?
Say your name again?
Sean Burke, S-E-A-N.
Okay. Testimony given before the board is taken on the oath, so you raise your right hand. I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, responses I do.
I do.
Okay, floor is yours.
Great. I live at 12 Ellis Ave. I see the Betchers backyard through my backyard, I'm getting a pretty clear view since they cut some of the trees back, it's opened things up quite nicely. We get to watch the kids play in the yard, and we came, I came today just because we discussed the addition, I hadn't seen the plans, I just didn't know how high up it was going to go versus how far out. It's a really long backyard, it really doesn't, from a lot coverage or, you know, density perspective concern us in any way, and we're happy to see the improvements in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any other further comments from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of the meeting, and I will ask the board, or is there anybody who has any further comments, questions on this proposal for us tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion from a board member on this particular case.
I'd be happy to.
Kathleen, yes?
I move to approve the petition of William Betcher, who seeks a special permit under Section 6.3.6 of the zoning bylaws, in order to add an addition 16-foot by 21-foot, located 10.3 feet from the side yard setback, rather than the required 15 feet on the property located at 15 Oak Street in Reading, Massachusetts, as referenced in the plot plan dated June 16, 2014, prepared by Edward J. Farrell, professional land surveyor, 110 Win Street, Suite 203, Wolvere, Mass., and stamped by Edward J. Farrell, professional land surveyor. I think there was also some architectural point, we referenced, though, like it was A1 through A4, as well as E1, and those, like, they were prepared by Harry Dean Rogers of Partners Architects, 177 Mill Street, Boston, Mass. And just the usual conditions. So the special permit is conditioned upon the following. The petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of the foundation permit for the work. The petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector, along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of the building permit. And finally, the as-built plans showing the completed construction shall be submitted to the building inspector immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. Anything else we might need?
We really can't condition this upon anticipation of future use, so we're just relying upon the application as it stands before us, so, yeah.
Well, now, the applicant did say that there is no plans to use it for, so if there should be, he would have to comply with any bylaws that exist that have to fit.
Right, I don't think that can go in our decision. It'll more than likely be part of the minutes.
Right.
But that won't be, that won't be part of the board's decision. Second? Second, I have a motion made and seconded. Any further comment from board members? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, none, as the record shows, special permit approved, 500. It will approve.
Thank you very much.
We have two weeks to write up this decision, and it will be submitted to the town clerk to be recorded in the registry of deeds then. If you wait a minute, I will stamp this in and give you for your record, for your own personal record, the stamped plan and architect plans.
Your set?
I got, I got, I'll use my set here, and then I'll use the.
No, that way.
Oh, no worries, happy to do it. Good luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to seeing you finished.
One horse be on the deck. It's baby steps to make that thing look pretty.
Thank you so much.
Copy of the plot plan and the architect's plans for your record that I'll be stamping and putting into the file.
Okay, that's great, thank you all.
Bye, goodbye.
Thank you very much, have a good one.
Good luck. Other work here, we have minutes on the agenda, but I don't believe, we just got some minutes today that we're going to review, and we will comment on those minutes at the next meeting, two weeks from tonight. And I think the next item on our agenda is an update from David on the zoning bylaw committee, and what we're, where we stand to date on that. David?
Okay.
Floor is yours, and while you're talking, I can finish doing my paperwork here.
Thank you. So the zoning advisory committee met as recently as last night. I actually had to leave early, so I didn't stay for a lot of the meeting, but I understand it got, it was eventful, there were, there were a number of, the primary focus of the meeting was on revisions to the signed bylaw. And town council was present, newly recently hired town council was present, as were members of the EDC, and some members of the public, as far as I recall. And so that is still a work in progress, and probably subject to substantial revision in time for the warrant for November's town meeting, so that we've got a lot of work ahead of us. My understanding is that CPDC has approved, and the town clerk has proposed articles for the September special town meeting warrant on September 29th regarding revisions that include a new medical marijuana bylaw. That will be its own separate article at September town meeting, I imagine that'll garner significant discussion. And some what I would consider routine revisions to the bylaw, approval of a, of a new Section 1 regarding sort of the preamble purpose and scope, and removal of a couple of sections, wetlands protection, and a mixed-use district. wetlands protection, and a mixed-use district that the town never uses. And the wetlands protection is obviously covered by state statute and regulations, so we felt we didn't need it, and it was redundant. I know I'm missing something in there, but, but that's the gist of what's going on the September warrant, and I understand that that's been approved and will be discussed at the September town meeting. And the zoning advisory committee has a lot of work left. We, we're getting to the final format, but there's a lot of work to be done to put the documents and the revisions in cogent format so that it can be organized correctly. So we've actually added more meetings just as recently, so we're, excuse me, meeting once or twice a week leading up to the September town meeting in order to try to get both revisions ready for November as well as to prepare for our presentation to town meeting in September, where likely do some sort of a PowerPoint, something to go up on the screen so that the town meeting members can see the text and/or the revisions and how the zoning advisory committee and town staff are going to present those revisions to the, to town meeting. So we've got some work left ahead of us, and then we've got, we've got some, some meetings in October, and so we're making a lot of progress. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of, you know, we've done, we've had a lot of discussion. We're working to try to supplement the work that the town consultant has done in order to bring in more, the consultant's revisions or proposed revisions or proposed work product more into keeping it in line with our mandate of simplifying and streamlining and bringing it in line with the master plan. So there's a lot of work, a lot of work to be done, a lot of work being done. The CPDC's been helping out an awful lot, too. They've, they've proposed a number of revisions, and so we're moving forward. But, you know, the next big thing is going to be the September town meeting. You know, the vote on medical marijuana sighting in town is one that's urgently needed. As in all town meeting votes, it's an up or down vote. We've got support from local community organizations and from daytime government, and, you know, it's an easy sell, I think. The way it's drafted is very simple, and it's, it's an easy sell because if we don't vote it in, then we have no bylaw. And that means there is no regulation of where a proposed dispensary might be located in town.
And who can then dictate that?
The town cannot, the applicant, the proposed applicant. So if we don't, if we don't, and we have it proposed to be, given the statutory buffers, it's proposed to be, an applicant could locate in the industrial zone off of Walker's Brook and over by the Reading DPW and in that general vicinity, and I think there was a small corner down near the train depot that one could locate and still not be in a buffer zone, have to be 500 feet away from a place where children regularly congregate. So we did a buffering, the town, daytime government did a diagram measuring 500 feet away from each designated area, school, playground, daycare, dance studio, karate studio, the trapeze school at Jordans. So 500 feet, you know, diameter away from there to make sure that we were getting it right, and I think we've got it right. So I think candidly, it'll be a very organized and well-thought, it has been a well-organized and well-thought-out plan, and I think it's something that, that the town has to support, town meeting has to support. And the town, town government does, community organizations in town do, so I think that's, that's going to be the main thrust of the September town meeting as it relates to the zoning bylaw. November's the big, the bulk of the revision and the bulk of the rewrite. So that's where we are, we're soldiering through it, as it were. Bumps in the road a little bit, but ultimately, it's, you know, we really, we're really trying to, you know, continue with our mandate of getting as much feedback as possible. And I'm pleased to see that town council is taking an active role and wants to take an active role in blessing, or not, and has, you know, he's, he's done his homework, at least for the portion of the meeting that I was at last night, he, you know, shared quite a bit of information that candidly makes more work, I think, for us, but I think also makes more work because it's important that we get it right. And so I'll follow up to see how the end of that meeting went, but I think ultimately, I think it's all positive, it's just a matter of making sure it's organized correctly.
Who is that new town council?
I knew you were going to ask me that.
Raymond, my yes.
Yeah, Raymond, yes, thank you.
Of my yes in Harrington.
I met him for the first time last night. I was impressed, you know, just during the hour that I was present last night. Certainly did his homework and has, I think, his finger on the pulse of what should be, you know, the goal should be, and I think will be helpful. So, yeah, if you're a town meeting member, get ready, because I think there'll be a lot of discussion in, in September and November. And in the meantime, we're incorporating the changes that this board proposed into the accessory apartment section. Half of the, half of the, we proposed two sweeping changes. One was removing the by right accessory apartment for...
Detached.
Detached.
Yeah.
So that, that in our revision, as far as it stands today, will be removed. But we decided to stop short of instituting a cap and letting that sort of a 10% cap and letting the chips fall where they may on that, and sort of letting the town discover through the progress of applications under that revised bylaw whether or not the volume is such that it needs to, the town needs to be concerned about how many it allows. But I think that struck a fair balance between simplifying and maintaining neighborhood character. So, all good stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Lot of work, David.
Yes, a lot of work done and a lot of work to be done.
Put a lot of time into it, definitely, yeah. We do have, Maureen noted, I think everybody got the email, we have canceled the October...
Fourth meeting.
Fourth meeting because of possible, yeah, possible...
Possible second.
Extension of the town meeting from September into the first of October, the first week of October.
They didn't take the chance, you know?
So they didn't want to take the chance, right. So right now, it's, it would be October 18th is the first meeting then?
And that'll be the first one in October.
Right.
That'll be the only one in October, unless we get longer cases.
Right, right. So the next meeting will be...
That'll happen.
Right, next meeting before town meeting will be September 18th for us.
Eighteenth, September 18th.
Yeah. And we have two cases on the agenda for one property on that one.
Yes.
The continuance.
Yeah, right.
We got the updates.
And we do get that packet tonight, right, when we sat down for the September 18th meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, updates to that one, it's continuation.
And you also saw you got a packet here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's from the clerk, from the town clerk in regards to ethics. Read it over. I believe it looked like, when I did a quick glance, there is a sheet to be signed and turned back to the town clerk, is there?
Yeah.
So keep that in mind.
We all need to go online and take a test.
Ah, yes. Did everybody pass?
Yeah, it's kind of hard not to.
I also saw it here.
If you're going to make a comment, if you fail it, you probably shouldn't.
Be here. There was a class, was it tonight or last night? There were, there were a couple of classes scheduled, the ethics classes, is that a... We've had them in the past, but...
I haven't been aware of any.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of any either recently, but I know I've, I've attended them in the past, so... And most, most of it is just basic common sense.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's online ethics training.
And...
Yep, did they, did they, I didn't read the packet, but did it say that you guys should take it online? You can't.
I haven't, I haven't read through yet, but it's probably right.
There are, it's an online training, and if you don't want to do it by yourself, town clerk will do it with people in a group.
I, it is, it is relatively easy.
I can't imagine.
It's so common sense.
Does it take you an hour and a half?
To take the test? No.
David, it only becomes a problem if you have no common sense.
David, it took about five minutes.
Okay, good. General, we have not, in my time of the board, run into a two hour, I think once...
Once before we...
Once before, we had a member that was, raises hackles a little bit over, an abbot that was here, and we thought he should not speak, or at least as a member of the board should not speak, yeah.
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 Because everybody recuses themselves?
Right, and, and I think as a board member, you, you do lose some rights as speaking, as a, as a need-to-rested citizen even, because you are making a decision on that, on cases, so you, you have to keep your opinion maybe to yourself, your own personal opinion.
Yeah, as an employee, I feel the same way.
Yeah, you do.
You know, I don't voice my personal opinion because...
Looks like that's the business tonight. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
A vote?
Second from Kathleen.
Si and Kathleen.
Si and Kathleen. And all those in favor? Adjourn.
I'm surprised.
Good.
Before we take off, can I hold out an invitation? It's that time of year again, that all those present, should they wish, I would happily entertain...